Life is so like.
I'm not like I should tell, like I so appreciate their feedback and their work in a way to get them real. They were like they were so helpful and we.
Get crowded with them. Oh, it's five o'clock. Five was much too much.
You know, I think sprint into my car.
Like to call this August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five city council meeting to order. Adam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Greg.
Present.
Councilmember Shealy.
Hi.
Councilmember McBride. Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Brady. Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seekings. Councilmember Tinkler. Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Appel. Councilmember Parker. Mayor Cogswell.
Here. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Tinkler to give the invocation and lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance.
In memory of Reverend Darby, if you could bow our heads, allow me to read an opening prayer that he gave to a session of United States House of Representatives on May fifteenth, two thousand and three. Gracious, merciful, and omnipotent Creator, we thank you for this new day, for our grace, for your grace, for your wisdom and your mercy. We thank you for the blessing of democracy and for bringing us safely to this present hour. Bless and guide all that is said and done in this deliberative body. Bless the members of the House with your judgment, your strength, and your compassion, so they may, they will make decisions with an eye not towards what is politically convenient, but towards what is right for all Americans. Bless our world and keep all nations in perfect peace. Bless our nation so that what Lincoln called "the better angels of our nature" will prevail. Bless our leadership at all levels so that public policy will be made in the light of the truth that shall indeed make us free. Have mercy upon us and help us to celebrate the diversity of our unity and the unity of our diversity. Let the words of your servant Amos be reflected in the decisions made here, so that justice will roll on like a river, so that righteousness will flow like a never-failing stream, so that we can really become one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, if there's anybody in the audience that is here to speak on the annexation or ordinance requesting the Putt Amendment related to two point four acres off of Folly Road, that item has been withdrawn by the applicant, so it will not be taken up. So I don't want you to have to wait through the, uh, the meeting, uh, just to realize that it's been withdrawn. So, um, and now, before we get going, I would like, if y'all will, uh, humor me a little bit, to take a moment of personal privilege to recognize an extraordinary leader in our city. Chief Curio, if you would please stand or join me, better yet, up here at the podium. Last month, our chief was honored at the Southeastern Association of Fire Chiefs Annual Conference in Franklin, Tennessee, where he was named the two thousand twenty-five Career Fire Chief of the Year. This award is the highest recognition given by the association, and it is reserved for leaders who set the standard for fire excellence across the southeast, measured by their leadership, innovation, professional development integrity, and their lasting contributions to the profession. As you all well know, with our chief having over thirty-five years in the fire service, the last seven being at the head of the Charleston Fire Department, he has guided our firefighters with steady leadership, a clear vision, and a true passion for protecting our community. His experience and dedication continue to strengthen not just our department, but the fire service as a whole. The Southeastern Fire, Southeastern Association of Fire Chief represents more than two thousand members across ten states, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands. To be recognized by the, by his peers at that level is a tremendous achievement and one that makes all of us here in Charleston very, very proud. So on behalf of myself, city council, and the citizens of Charleston, I wanted to give a hearty congratulations to the chief and thank you for all that you do to keep our city safe.
Well, first off, thank you, and what I would say is, uh, I got the award, but it is clear that it's a team effort in the Charleston Fire Department. We have such fantastic people who move things along every single day, and I am happy to work with them, so thank you.
All right, we have, uh, two recogni-, uh, presentations or recognitions. Councilman Tinkler mentioned, uh, the Reverend Darby. The first is a resolution related to honoring Reverend Darby. Whereas, the city of Charleston extends its deepest sympathy at the death of one of South Carolina's most devoted civil rights leaders, Reverend Joseph Darby, Jr. And whereas, a Colombian native, Reverend Darby passed away on August eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at the age of seventy-four, just one day after his birthday. And whereas, for nearly five decades, he faithfully served as a pastor at African, African Methodist Episcopal churches across South Carolina, including Nichols Chapel A.M.E. in Charleston, demonstrating unwavering commitment to spiritual leadership, community engagement, and the better, betterment of those he served. And whereas, as a tireless civil rights advocate, he held leadership roles as First Vice President of both the Charleston Branch and the South Carolina State Conference of the NAACP, working as an advocate equally in justice statewide. And whereas, Reverend Darby also served on several statewide education and civic boards, including the African-American Achievement Committee, the Racial Cultural Advisory Council for the, for the South Carolina School Boards Association, and the Board of Directors of the Daniel J. Jenkins Institute for Children. And whereas, his leadership and advocacy earned numerous honors, including the Top Achiever Award in the South Carolina Black Male Showcase, recognition among South Carolina's twenty-five most influential African-Americans, the NAACP Southeast Regional Medgar D. E- E- Evans Award, Leadership Award, an induction into the South Carolina Black Hall of Fame. And whereas, his legacy is cherished by his wife, Mary Bright Darby, his sons Jason and Jeremy, his grandchildren, and the many congregants, colleagues, and community members he inspired throughout his lifetime. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, William S. Cogswell, Jr., mayor of the city of Charleston, on behalf of our citizens, extend a heartfelt condolences to the Darby family and trust they will find comfort in the enduring impact of his remarkable life, leadership, and service. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I wanted to thank, uh, Councilmember Tinkler for the prayer that he brought, uh, reciting the words of Reverend Darby. I want to thank you, the city, staff, all involved with the resolution that you just read. As we all know, whoever came in his presence, we all were very fortunate to have a man like Reverend Darby in our community, but frankly, our state as well. Uh, I guess we stole him a little bit from Columbia. He's just such a, I mean, such a wonderful distance, difference, and if anybody ever read any of his op-ed pieces, it would touch you, um, in the most serious way. So, we pray thanks that Reverend Darby came this way. He won't be replaced, but again, we thankful that God sent him our way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I concur with my colleague, and during time Reverend Darby and I go way back from the civil rights movement when I was really strong in the civil rights movement during that time and in NAACP during that time when I was fourteen years old. And, um, he was always a person that was straight ahead. He didn't want no foolishness, but he always think about community and the people of the city of Charleston. Even wherever he goes, he always gonna miss the city of Charleston, even when he was at Morris Brown A.M.E. Church. And I, I'm also A.M.E. too, so you know, we all get together on that, but he used to talk to me all the time about it, and he was a person that really, really was interested in the community and the people of the city of Charleston. And, uh, you know, when I heard, got the news and I heard about it, you know, it kind of hit me, and I know he was going through some challenges with his sickness, but, you know, God knows best, and I always say God knows best on everything, you know, and, uh, so we just hope that the family find some strength to keep going on, you know, even though he's gone, but he is still here in their heart. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay. We have, uh, another resolution or proclamation, excuse me. I'd like to ask Coach Spivey, uh, Councilmember Parker, and the James Allen Charter High School Trojans baseball team to join me up here on the podium. Come on, gentlemen.
Hello.
All right.
Good seeing you.
See you. All right, gentlemen, good to see you. See you. Come on up. Nice to see you. See you. All right. See you. Keep moving down, keep moving down. All right, man. Good to see you. See you. Councilwoman Parker, you gotta come up here too. Come on, come on, come on, come on. All right, we got the parents in here. Be ready. Whereas, the James Allen Charter High School Trojans baseball team has demonstrated extraordinary talent, perseverance, and teamwork by winning the two thousand twenty-five Class 5A Division One State Championship. And whereas, this victory marks the second consecutive state title for the Trojans, following their two thousand twenty-four Class 4A championship, and reflects the program's sustained excellence and commitment to success. And whereas, in a thrilling, hard-fought Game Three, the Trojans rallied in an extra inning to secure a six-five victory over Lexington High School, showcasing determination, resilience, and a never-quits attitude. And whereas, under the leadership of head coach Matt Spivey and his coaching staff, the team overcame challenges throughout the season and in the championship series, earning admiration from their school, their community, and fans all across South Carolina. And whereas, the city of Charleston takes great pride in the accomplishments of James Allen Charter High School Trojans baseball team and recognizes the dedication, the sportsmanship, and the unity that they have shown. Now, therefore, I, William S. Cogswell, Jr., mayor of the city of Charleston, to hereby proclaim August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as James Island Charter High School Trojans Baseball Team Day. Coach Spivey, you wanna say a few? Where is it? There it is. Come on up, come on up, man. Give us pep talk.
No, there's no, no pep talk, just, uh, um, a heartfelt thank you on behalf of myself, my staff, and these players, uh, to Councilwoman Parker, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us and recognizing us, uh, for the work that these guys have put in and, and achieved, the success that they've had. Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's get a picture with the, with the proclamation. Who wants to hold the medal? Where's the taxi?
I'll take it for you.
Well, you're gonna be shortstop then, right? All right, let's give one more round of applause to the champion. For the guys, congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Congrats. One more day to get that here.
Absolutely.
See you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, man.
Appreciate it.
You gonna win again? See you next year, right?
Right.
We like having that day.
That's right. All right, we are now on to public hearings. There are seven public hearing items tonight, um, and, uh, items E-one through E-two will be as amended. I'm gonna ask Philip, uh, to give a presentation on each.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So, public hearings tonight begin with, uh, this first item that is eight thirty-five Magnolia Road. Uh, it's a rezoning request. The request is from the SR two zoning to, uh, that's a single-family residential to commercial transitional CT zoning. The property is located, uh, on Magnolia Road, is in West Ashley, approximately maybe midway up Magnolia Road, uh, between Savannah Highway and St. Andrews. So it's really right adjacent to the West Ashley Greenway. Uh, as you can see on the image, there's, uh, zonings around this property that's highlighted, uh, including the, the West Ashley Bike Way, I'm sorry, I may have said Greenway earlier. Uh, this is the West Ashley Bike Way right next to it, that's conservation-zoned. And across the street from this property, which is a church, uh, currently, uh, the, the zoning across the street is, uh, similar to the, to the rezoning request, which is CT, and, uh, some other zonings around there are DR one F, which is a diverse residential, uh, zoning. So, the request, uh, is going from residential to a commercial zoning. Uh, the church, uh, has requested this, uh, to add some flexibility to the property as they're going through a sale, as they are looking to relocate, uh, their church, uh, from, from this location to another in the future. So, a sale of the property would be, um, in, in its, in its future, um, a CT zoning is one that the city, um, views as something that, uh, fits, uh, within residential neighborhoods because it has somewhat limited uses, uh, limited operation hours, uh, even limited size of, uh, the buildings in some cases. So this is just an aerial view of, of the surrounding neighborhood. The, um, church itself, uh, from Magnolia Road. Uh, this is a view into, um, actually, it's a, a city right-of-way Armstrong Avenue, which kind of goes into a parking area across from the church, adjacent to the city's, uh, West Ashley Bike Way. Another view across Magnolia from the church is, uh, what used to be Pete's Body Shop, uh, for a long time, it was, this property was rezoned to CT in two thousand eighteen. Uh, it, uh, had been an office, I believe, an architecture office for a while. Um, I'm not sure if it's being used right now, but, um, it may be vacant. Is it just another view of the, of the office? Um, and the, um, city plan recommendation for this area, uh, is it's in a suburban area, uh, suburban areas in the city plan are indicative of an area that may not necessarily have commercial, but it might be predominantly, predominantly residential, um, but does not preclude, uh, commercial or mix of uses. And so, that was, uh, yeah, eight thirty-five Magnolia Road. I just wanted to, um, set something straight on the agenda. The, um, I believe the council district was in indicating, uh, reversed from that, from, uh, the next item, which, uh, was, um, downtown. So, uh, we'll, we'll make note of that on the ordinance. So the next item, uh, E-two is, uh, moving to downtown. This is on Meeting Street, uh, you're, I'm sure all aware of Star Gospel Mission. The request here is a rezoning from, uh, the, uh, I believe it's the two to, two and a half to three and three and a half Old City High Districts going to a four Old City High District. So it, it is, uh, asking for the entirety of the property into this four district. The city is actually the applicant in this case, uh, given that, um, there, there are rules built into the city code about high districts that would only allow you to do one step up from, uh, uh, or within the high districts, one step up in height. And because the project that, uh, has been ongoing now for, or in planning for a couple of years, um, it has been involving, a, a little additional height has been necessary, and because there was already a rezoning in height a, a couple of years ago, uh, it was necessary for the city itself to be involved in the rezoning of this property to make it a map amendment. So, an aerial of the property, so the height district, um, would change to allow four stories. This would be an, uh, image just indicating kind of a line of sight, indicating what you might see from either Meeting Street on the right, uh, or Nassau Street, I guess, as well, and, um, you know, what, what it might look like from, uh, you know, a person standing on the street. This would be, uh, ground perspective. Along Meeting Street. And this is from the neighborhood behind from Nassau Street. Of course, uh, in this area, as you might imagine, the neighborhood district or designation, uh, in our future land use in the city plan is, um, pretty prominent downtown. It's just next to also a city center's, um, designation, which is the highest and most intense, uh, use, uh, in the plan. The next item.
Can I ask a question? What are they gonna build there?
I'll let, if the applicant is here, I'll let the applicant go into more detail, but if there is an expansion of the Star Gospel Mission, um, you know, shelters.
Well, let's get to them all, we'll get to it, fine.
Get to the end.
Yep.
I'll explain some.
Uh, the third rezoning is on West Ashley Circle, sorry, and, uh, this is going from a gathering place zoning GP to general business. This is owned by the city. I believe we bought the property a few months ago, and, uh, as you know, is, is slated for fire department, uh, operations. And, um, the GB, uh, zoning was, was necessary from a design perspective. There are a lot of, uh, design standards and rules within, you know, the GP, uh, gathering place zoning that, uh, would have make it, made it a little more difficult for us to, to build the operations center. Aero, aerial of the property, as you, I'm sure you're aware, there's, um, challenges on the site, there's some wetlands, uh, power lines, uh, however, we're working through those issues and design the site to include everything the fire department needs for the site. And, uh, this is in the, uh, part of it is in the, uh, low-impact conserved area, uh, because it is somewhat low on the, on the property, and, um, most of the property, my understanding is, would be given over to stormwater, um, area, uh, to make sure it does not impact surrounding areas. Uh, the other zonings, uh, I'll zip through these, uh, are results of annexations. These are all single-family, so it's only E-four Liverpool Drive. Pine Bark Lane. And Riverdale Drive. And one more, I believe, two thirty-four Yates Avenue. These are all single-family zonings. And with that, I am available for questions.
Uh, we have twelve people signed up for a public hearings.
Twelve?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we have twelve people signed up for, uh, public comment on, on, one of these items. Uh, we'll give everybody one minute. I do want to remind everybody the rules of decorum. You are here to have your voice heard, not to ask direct questions of council. Uh, this is not a back and forth. If you go over the one minute or, uh, or do something that breaks the rules of decorum, I'll give you one warning, your second warning, uh, you will be removed from the, the meeting. So, Madam Clark, who do we have first up?
All right, the time is one minute. Anthony Bryant.
Need some bike help, none at all. How do you get this thing up? I want to make sure my, my voice is heard this minute. Good, appreciate it, hear me? Anthony G. Bryant, twenty-one through the Cortland Avenue, all the amount of two nine four zero three. My concern is the, the, the Star Mission piece with the Coria Square, and Coria Square is really impeaching upon the progress of everyday people. Okay, that, that whole zoning area is a bad idea, okay? And, and having McGuire Woods Dominion Energy Corporation, in which I filed a public comment on low-income folks and their power bills. As a result, the city of Charleston Police Department came to my address, the president, A.G. Bryant Group, Inc., on behalf of South Carolina Department of Social Services, I don't know why, it would lead a U.S. Attorney, South Carolina Attorney General against me, but I appreciate this today. Again, these developers that you support, progress provides support, need a police officer full-time in that area. I saw old folks walking up King Street with, and that whole development, that Pierre Manor Goat and Gray Star who got billions of dollars, look out for these community people because they're here until now, until the economic wind blows them out of their.
Time. Mohamed Adrees.
Marsha Higgins.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Charleston City Councilman. I'm Marsha Higgins, uh, president of the Maryville-Ashleville Neighborhood Association, and here to speak about the rezoning of eight thirty-five Magnolia Road, which is currently a church. The residents of the community presented a petition to the Planning Commission on July the sixteenth and requests that they do not approve this request for rezoning from residential to commercial. The Planning Commission did vote eight to oppose and zero to. The Planning Commission did vote eight to oppose and zero to approve, which we appreciated very much. We do feel that we have to look at the long-term, the long-term basis of this property being rezoned to commercial, having a business located there. So we do ask you to please do not approve that this property is rezoned from residential to commercial. Thank you very much.
Juanita Gordon. Mary Reed. Nida Reid. Raymond Washington.
Good afternoon. My name is Ramon Washington. First of all, honor to the mayor and the city council members. I am the pastor of One Word of Great, One Word of Grace located on Magnolia Road. The reason for the request is, we've been there for 10 years, just giving you a short version, really try to do outreach with the community, try to really build up a local church for that community, but we just haven't had the support. As a matter of fact, all the members that currently attend our church, they're from other areas. So we pray that as a body of Christ, to relocate and continue the mission further, to hopefully to advance and continue to build ministry. And I could say a lot more, but I know I'm on time. So I would really like you to consider the approval, and I thank you for your time today.
Arthur McFarland.
Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Arthur McFarland, and I represent Reverend Washington and the One Word Grace Assembly Church. This request for rezoning is probably one of those that is most beneficial to the community. Reverend Washington did not say, but the capacity of this church are 200 members, okay? They can seat 200. Their church right now has only 10 members. So it does not present a, a, a problem for the community without the church using that capacity with only about a dozen parking spaces. So the community wants this church to remain a church, but if another church comes in, there's no question that it will present a problem for the community. And that's why I say that this is one of those zoning, rezoning requests that really is beneficial to the community. Whatever business purchases this property, it will be in a position certainly to have a lot more traffic and a lot less parking issues. So we ask that you approve the rezoning of 835. Thank you.
Edward Phipps.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is the first time speaking here, so it's an honor. Thank you for everybody's service, Mayor, thank you for yours. I'm here just to speak on behalf of 835 Magnolia Road, the rezoning, and I would just ask that you approve it. Thank you.
Delano Francis. Gwendolyn, I think it's Gwendolyn Bobo.
Here requesting that the owners appeal to overcame zoning on church located at 835 Magnolia Road from residence to, to commercial be denied. On behalf of my family, the Gaston family, who's lived in that neighborhood since 1954, we still own the same property and we still have family there. Most of the residents in that area are senior citizens. And for a long time, our neighborhood, Maryville as well as Ashleville, has had a lot of disturbance because of where the bike trail is. The railroad had a track there, running trains day, nights. You know, people were killed on the railroad. A lot of changes happened in the past 30 years. There's a lot of different traffic there, there are more drivers there, there are people who use cut-throughs so that we just don't need another change. So we're asking you to let it remain residential, because the lot really isn't that big. I can't see, you know, any improvement with changing it to commercial. Thank you very much.
Marion Platt.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmember, neighbors, thank you so much for your continued support of Star Gospel Mission. As you know, for over 121 years, the mission has been a place of refuge and renewal for men and women facing homelessness in Charleston. Your approval of our rezoning request to four stories would strengthen that legacy and ensure that we can expand responsibly to meet today's needs. And to clarify, our request is for only a portion of 474 Meeting Street, not the entire TMS. By the second week of October, you should know, we will welcome the first women and children onto our campus since Hurricane Hugo struck Charleston in 1989. And that reopening to families is a milestone that has been made possible by your ongoing support. And for that, I'm deeply grateful. Thank you, and God bless you.
And Mr. Idris, we called on you when you were out. Do you need to speak?
Evening. People ready to improve and develop the environment, reflecting on our councilmen, Waring, Gregory, and Seaking. When you look at the three, you see the sixth district and Gregory, Mr. Dudley. He did a wonderful job bringing a television in here, tell your vision, and they told it. And when we look at councilman Waring, his father was in that seat before him, and he was a warrior, and he challenged Mayor Raleigh. And he's in the seventh district. Seaking, I love his name, it says Seaking, and he's trying to be the king of city council. When you add the three on up, you get 21. Now, Seaking, councilman Seaking, his name is an S, and that's the 19th letter in your alphabet.
Was there anyone else who needed to speak during public hearings who was not called? Oh, we have.
As a member on the executive board of the Eastside Community Development Corporation, we were in meetings with Star Gospel Mission, the whole walkway through council member and mayor. And we strongly support them from the east side with them on what they are planning to do with the voting. Because, I mean, we already done walked through, we already seen, we met with them. So they ain't taking no shot, can't even throw no punch. Everything they said they been gonna do, and they are doing it right now. So I'm just letting you know, as a, as a member of the executive board of the Eastside Neighborhood Development Corporation, we fully support Star Gospel Mission with them going up to four story. Thank you all.
All right. I'm Terry from council. Sorry?
My name's Aurelia Carr Olverson. I am a native Charlestonian. I've been away from Charleston for 33 years, serving our country in United States Air Force, and then in corporate America before I moved back. And I have to say, I do not recognize this place. This doesn't look familiar at all. The things that used to be the rules are no longer the rules, and that's not why I'm here. I am here to say that the, the look at the property on Magnolia Road going through Marysville and Ashleville area, that it needs to remain residential. There's too much traffic that already goes all over everywhere. And that rezoning is just going to cause it to be a lot more challenging for the residents in the area to move through that area, because everybody's here now. We don't need to put up any more apartment buildings here, because apartment dwellers do not pay property taxes. And for the roads to be expanded, the way that we need them to be expanded to accommodate the very people that we're inviting in, they don't help pay for that. At least, that's my understanding of it.
Hi. This is just for public hearings.
May I move approval items one through seven?
Second.
Count, is that as amended for items one and two to update the district numbers?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, as amended.
Motion to take and approve all items one through seven, one and two as amended. We have a second. Any comment? Councilman Mitchell.
This is a quick comment so far as Star Gospel Mission. I was working with Star Gospel Mission in the exception of what they're trying to do. They're gonna build this four-story building, but they're gonna have, they're building some space for women, homeless women with children, which is, they have never done that before. But Star Gospel Mission been in the business in the east side ever since I know myself. And I was doing, I was working with them for over, you know, that's a long time. I ain't wanna say how many years, but it's a long, long time I was working with Star Gospel Mission. They have done a great job in that community, and they're a pull-up of that community, and they help out a lot in that community. So this is the first time you're gonna see that they have a building there for homeless women with children. And they're gonna assist those individuals, once they stay there for a year or lower than a year and a half, to assist them in finding other permanent housing, and they will help insist in paying for them for over a year wherever they find the, the, the housing there. And the other part of it, they're gonna also be able to expand a little bit with the, with, with females there, because they have never done with females before. This is the first time they're getting in with females. Always was males. And we don't have too many businesses around here that have housed females. It's always male, male, male. I'm a male, but you know, I still need the females there too. So we, we need these companies, these businesses to do those type things, because we have so many females out here that are homeless. And if you come on King Street where I live, you can see them every day, because I work with them every day. They come by my house every day, like one and two o'clock in the morning, which I don't like. But then, you know, I started, like my son told me the other day when he came down from Alabama, he said, Daddy, where you started? So I ain't got nothing to say. So, you know, they come by and I give them clothes, with my grands give them clothes, and I kind of help feed them and give them little change when I happen. But there's a lot of them out here that need a place to stay, but this would be a permanent place for them to stay for a long period of time and assist with the homelessness, and I hope some other community organization would do the same, because we have a lot of people out here that's unhoused. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion probably made and seconded. No further comments, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
As amended, aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. All right, we're now on to approval of council minutes.
Second.
Motion may probably seconded, all those in favor, signal probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. Now we're on to citizens' participation. This period is limited to 30 minutes. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up to speak?
Right, I think we have some people who signed up online and in person. So I believe we have, I think we have 11.
Okay, we'll give a minute and a half on this one. Would you please call the first speaker?
All right, and just a reminder, our rules ask that we start with speakers who are, who have signed up to speak on agenda items first. First speaker is.
Before you get, again, rules of decorum apply, just wanted to make a reminder on that.
David Bab, and the time is one, a minute and a half.
Thank you for allowing this due process right to be allowed to object. My objection is that the South Carolina legislators in the 124th session allowed for amendment to Title 50. The municipality here took that amendment, but they wrote their own set of laws and superseded South Carolina legislative authority. As few people in here know, I've been litigating against the city for a little over two years now and was successful in getting this ordinance brought back into the repealed state. But what they put back together is they just dressed the pig up in a different outfit. It's got new numbers, but it's the same rhetoric. Nothing has changed. They took out Officer Merrill's $300,000 liability insurance policy, but everything still violates South Carolina legislative authority, which is a constitutional violation. So their ordinance on the boat permit will remain in federal court. I'm getting ready to pull my appeal back down from the Fourth Circuit. And due to the activity over here in the clerk's office by preventing me to have a day in court there to get a ruling on the constitutionality of the ordinance, I'm moving back into federal court with, with that issue. So thank you.
Anthony Bryant.
When public safety is used as a weapon on behalf of, of, of corporate interests, Dominion Energy gives $15 million along with our utilities to General Assembly. The hospital associate gives $1,500,000 to General Assembly. I just filed my petition here regarding rate increases for low-income folk. Now, the premise of homelessness is $20 a, a, an income, a wage, $20, you know, 20 an hour. Under $20 an hour, you gonna have homelessness. So this, this, this quite the trick play, $20, under $20, they at your house eating dinner. All right, so let's keep it real. Now, when you use the South Carolina Department of Social Service, you did the building, right? Teddy Pride Building, you did that building. And, and somebody calls your house on you, on your business and your company, and at that point, you know what they deal with? The IRS, US Postal Service, Homeland Security, that's what they deal with. US Attorney's Office, South Carolina Attorney General's Office, against yours truly. But I'm built for it, you dig what I'm saying? When you built for something, you don't worry about it. When you not built for it, you're not, because you know what? You're not black. And those who are black sometimes ain't black, okay? So we gotta get black people to be black again, so white can look at us a little more differently. Here's my information to get to the mayor for the last time. I, I, get this to the mayor, because I don't have time to give it to him. I don't have time for that, I don't have time to meet him, okay? Because, because, you know, he just literally just a white boy.
John P. Hughes.
Hi, I'm John Hughes. I, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson. I live on John's Island, as it turns out, in District 3. And it turns out I live on Coral Reef Drive. Now, I don't think there's any Coral Reef off of Wapala, at Estou, wherever. But I have a book here, a science book for you to help you, because I know we have lawsuit against Big Oil. And basically, it, something I disagree with. But anyways, just so everybody knows, Mayor, little Chloe, she lives with her family on the Great Barrier Reef of Australia. One day at school, her class had a special guest teacher, Dr. Borreil, a professor from Cook University, took the cla, took the class. He told the class that their home and families were in great danger because humans were causing dangerous climate change. Dr. Borreil said that humans are adding carbon dioxide to the air when using fuel like gasoline and coal. I believe carbon dioxide is a great nutrient that helps all our plants across the whole state. It's not a poison. And this book, I know it's a, it's a textbook, but it's from the CO2 Coalition.
Aye.
And I hope it helps your decision. And I know, we're gonna jump in on this.
Darren Lee Calhoun.
Hey, my friends. First and foremost, I would like to express my deep frustration and disappointment in the council. Hey, my friends. First and foremost, I would like to express my deep frustration and disappointment in the council on the handling of the John C. Calhoun statue. At the time of his removal, my family called me from all over congratulating us on taking a step forward. Now, I feel as if I can say on behalf of my family that you all should have melted the thing down when we had a chance. Now, if we have, if we do have something that we can do right now, there's a portrait back there of John C. Calhoun. It's really easy for us to remove that. We could just have the gifts come and take it away. It's very easy. As the Chair of the History Commission for the 250th anniversary, we explored it. Now, on our public burial ground, you can use your influence to stop the building on this public burial ground at 106 Coming Street. We absolutely should do it. When I was a member of the school board last year, when the College of Charleston presented this issue to us for a letter of support, we never heard anything about a burial ground at 106 Coming Street. All we heard about was the YWCA. Now, it is up to us. We want to continue to call ourselves, call ourselves the leaders in historic preservation and conservation and interpretation. It is up to us now to stop the building on this public burial ground. It's not just an African burial ground. We have white people in there. We have orphans in there. We have indigenous people in there. And we have enslaved people as well as free people of color. We have to stop this right now. Thank you.
Brian Turner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for having me tonight. I, I want to just acknowledge that you'll be hearing a little bit tonight during public comment about an item not on your agenda, which is the public burial ground that Mr. Calhoun referenced. The Preservation Society, who I represent, is in support of a coalition effort to educate the community about the very significant history being discovered at this public burial ground at Calhoun and Coming Street. The site is slated for redevelopment by the College of Charleston. I think you'll be hearing more about this issue in the future. I'm here tonight to just express that broad public awareness by city leadership is particularly important, given, given the previous, the city's previous role as an operator of the burial ground in the late 17th and early 1800s. This includes the years when Charleston became a global hub for the importation of Africans prior to the federal ban on the transatlantic slave trade in 1808. We're grateful that last week the college released an important history on the landscape, which was commissioned by BVL Historic Preservation Research. I'd urge you all to read it on the Coming Street Commons Project website, given, especially given the extent of community dialogue on this issue. Frankly, it's been surprising to me, to us at the Preservation Society and my colleagues with cultural institutions throughout the city, how little has been known about the site for so long and how much we're coming to realize that this is really not an ordinary burial ground. So thank you for listening and paying careful attention to this issue as it will undoubtedly remain an important point of community discussion moving forward. Thank you.
And the next speaker, I'm having a hard time reading. I apologize, but I believe the address is Bear Island. And they signed up after Mr. Turner. And can I get your name for the record?
Yes, James Johnjo.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. In 2014, the Y put up their property at 106 Coming Street for $5 million. A former College of Charleston alumni acquired the property for $8 million. No development took place, and it was sold 10 years later for $27 million by the College of Charleston. The college commissioned a report by the BVL that clearly states that between 4,600 and 12,000 individuals were likely buried on the site. During the acquisition process, which began in 2023, the college engaged with elected and oversight committees and boards. This included letters of support to demonstrate that the project had local government backing and was in alignment with the city's priorities. What the college did not make explicitly clear was that 106 Coming Street sits atop a former municipal burial ground. In fact, the first time it was explicitly mentioned is in March, after the college had already acquired the property and was asking for an additional $7 million. The college failed to make it known to the city, to the county, or the state that the site it plans to develop was so filled with graves that it had to be closed. On August 4th, in a community meeting, the college stated it was aware of the burial ground and that it did not do any form of engagement with the community prior to purchase. I wonder if the college had led with transparency, would we be at a different outcome? I am imploring the city and the Office of the Mayor to do not what is politically convenient, but what is morally right, and take immediate action to recognize this sacred ground, acknowledge the souls of the people resting at this site, and see what statues and laws are in place that empower the city and the council and the mayor to ensure that there's eternal resting place and that these people are not disturbed. Thank you.
Mohammed Idris.
I call it strong and I don't like to say we can't because it's been seven days, you're weak. And we've been weak too long. So we're trying to be, we're moving to be strong. On, we're having an event on Martin Power, cross from the project at 155 Jackson Street. And you say something there? Okay. And it'd be from 11 to 6. The Bible say the harvest is planted, but the labor is a few. And we will be calling on some labors to come out and work to try to, to not try, but to get the wealth that we need in our neighborhood so that we can move out of the project and not be in a project and take advantage of the many things that Charleston have to offer. Charleston calls itself a holy city, and we will be working Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. As Jesus says, the harvest is planted, but the labor is a few. So we asking you to join us because we have paid $500 for these three days, and that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money for a poor man like me and my group. So we asking you all to help us because we're going to be promoting culture, we're going to be promoting education, politics, religion.
Aye. And we will move on to our online list. Timothy Simmons. And if you're online, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Omar Mohammed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Omar Mohammed, and I'm here on behalf of Protect and Respect Bodies Coalition. We are here today because the city of Charleston bears a historic and ongoing responsibility for the sacred burial grounds at 106 Coming Street. From 1790s to 1807, the city itself established and managed this site as a public burial ground. That responsibility does not disappear simply because the land was sold later. Today remains of approximately 4,000 enslaved Africans, indigenous people, and immigrants are interned there. This reality should halt any development. Instead, it calls us to remembrance, preservation, and repair. Our coalition's position is clear. There must be no disturbance of the bodies. Excavation, demolition, or removal would desecrate this sacred ground and erase the histories of both their ancestors and their living descendants. We call the city to support the forthcoming recommendations from the History Commission and HARC and to assist the College of Charleston in two critical steps. First, recognition. The college must formally acknowledge 106 Coming Street as sacred ground through statements, signage, public documentation, and incorporation into its institutional narrative. Continued silence is an act of erasure. Second, community partnership. The city must establish a commission that includes community experts to study the historical significance of this sacred site. This commission should also oversee the co-creation of binding community benefits agreement. Thank you.
Jerome Harris. And if you're online, you can press star six to unmute yourself.
Mayor, members of council, I want to acknowledge and congratulate you on the actions that you're taking related to the unhoused population. It's a critical matter, and HARC has been paying particular attention to it and will continue to do so. I also want to share with you that Harlan Green, Chair of the History Commission, at their last meeting, History Commission passed a resolution to work jointly with HARC to develop a set of recommendations in our advisory capacity to the mayor and council around the questions that have been raised around the Coming Street Commons Project. We think in our initial conversations that Charleston actually has a bespoke, unique mayor solution that was applied in the Anderson Street Burial Ground project as it relates to the development of the, excuse me, Gilead Arts Center. Starting from there, I think there's opportunity to, we think that there's an opportunity to do some good work and move forward in a way that's respectful and builds community. We recognize that the council doesn't always have opportunity to deal with these matters. Would ask you to consider a possible council communications session sometime in the next month or two, given the timeline that's in place to begin the demolition on the project, I believe, in October. Thank you very much.
Stephanie Favel. And if you're online, you can press star six to unmute yourself. All right, I think those are all the speakers that we have. We did receive some comments online. We received one comment from Mr. Bab, who spoke previously, and that was sent to council in full. We received one from Mr. Mohammed, who also spoke earlier, and we sent that comment to council in full. One comment was received from Brian McKendrick stating that the agenda item incorrectly listed the acreage for the portion of Folly Road being annexed and that the item should be deferred until it is corrected. One comment was received from Travis Randall, saying that more affordable housing was needed in Charleston. One comment was received from Megan Blyzner in favor of the annexation and rezoning of a portion of Folly Road to PUD classification. 85 comments were received in opposition to the annexation and rezoning of a portion of Folly Road to PUD. Five comments were received from Mr. Bryant. One phone call was received from Gabriella Brown, opposed to the annexation and rezoning of a portion of Folly Road. And two emails were received in opposition to the First Amendment demonstration ordinance. And those were all the comments we received.
Okay, moving on, we are now on to petitions and communications. There is one, School Resource Officer Agreement for Approval. This came in after the last public safety meeting. It needs to be approved for a grant request. This agreement is to add one SRO at the Early College High School. Can I entertain a motion? A motion made, probably seconded. Any discussion on this? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. There are several appointments for the Commission on Disability Issues. Mr. Mayor. Recreation. One, one point I want to make out is that Item C, the Housing Authority nomination, is the applicant has asked that it be deferred for 30 days. So I want to take that one off. So can I get an amended motion?
As amended.
Motion amended and seconded for Item C to be deferred. All those, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. We are now on to council communications. Councilman McBride, I'd like to turn it over to you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the purpose of this will be to essentially report out to the fellow, my fellow council members, who I know all of you except for myself and Councilman Tinkler deliberated extensively on how to redistrict Johns Island and other portions of Charleston. And after almost two years in the seat, I want the opportunity to kind of report out to this council as to what I've learned and what the issues are that are improving on Johns Island and James Island, but where the structural changes persist. But I would like to defer this until November 12th. I'd like for some more time for some projects that the county is working on with the city and the state to kind of come to fruition a little bit, to be able to report out some of those things to you all on November 12th.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman McBride. We are now on to consent agenda items. There are two reports from special facilities and community development under consent. No actions needed, but let me, any, any commentary from you, Chairman Mitchell?
See, we had two items, and both of them was deferred, but we'll be bringing that back at a later date.
Okay, so no action items there. We are on to council committee reports. We'll start with you, Councilman Shealy, Committee for Public Safety.
Thank you, Mayor Cogswell. The Public Safety Committee met August 12th at 4:00 PM for the Police Department. We had an approval to accept the SRO grant with no match. We also approved two SRO agreements for the Police Department. For the Fire Department, we approved, we had approval to submit two Homeland Security grants. There's no match required on those. And then for the Fire Department, we had an approval to authorize the mayor to execute, to execute a memorandum of understanding with Roper St. Francis Health Care for coordination of mutual aid in response to incidents involving hazardous materials and other mass contamination incidents. That concludes my report, and I ask for, I move for approval for the adoption of the report.
Motion made, probably seconded for acceptance of the report. Any further discussion on this? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now I'd like to call on Councilman Waring for Public Works.
All action about items passed unanimously. Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I want to know if you want to take the privilege to explain items E1 through, as you did at the, at the committee meeting level, or we just pass them unanimously as they were passed in committee.
I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Well, all action about items passed unanimously, and I move the adoption of the report.
Our motion made, probably seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. We are now on to Councilmember Seekings for TNT.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We got lots of good reports on what's going on. We did welcome a new code enforcement officer, which is welcome news to many of you. No items, I believe, need any action by this council.
So motion made, probably seconded to accept the report. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Now we're on to Councilman Gregg, Ways and Means.
Thank you very much.
Have motion made, properly seconded, as amended. Any further commentary on Ways and Means? If none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Now we are on to bills for second reading. There is one bill up for second reading as amended, Item M6.
Move for approval as amended.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I got him back in court. Mr. Mayor, if you would accept an amendment to that motion, Councilmember Shealy, can we move M1 through five and M7 through 10 for approval on second reading and take up M6 separately?
So there's a motion on the floor to approve M6. Do y'all want to add the other ordinances that Councilmember Seekings mentioned to that motion?
Would ask that M6 be withdrawn from that motion.
Right. So we have a motion, we're going to take M6 separately. We have, we have a motion made, probably seconded.
So is the motion being withdrawn? Okay.
So the motion is withdrawn then. Councilman Seeking?
Motion, I would move to take M1 through M5 and M7 through M10 together and approve for second reading.
We have a motion made, probably seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Move for third reading on same, same items.
We have a motion made for third reading on the same items, probably seconded. There's no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
I would next move to approve Item M6, a bill entitled An Ordinance to Appeal and Replace, Chapter 21, Article 3, Division 4, Sections 21 through 67 through 21 through 74, and amend Chapter 22, Article 1, Sections 22-7 and 22-8 of the Code of the City of Charleston to conform with state law as amended for second reading.
So we have a motion made. Can I have a second? Motion made, properly seconded. Any further discussion on that? If none, all those in favor.
I think we need to do a roll call vote on that one.
We're going to do a roll call vote on that.
All right, Councilmember Gregg, Councilmember Shealy,
Aye.
Councilmember McBride, Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Brady. Councilmember Gregory. Councilmember Waring. Councilmember Seekings. Councilmember Tinkler. Councilmember Bowden. Councilmember Appel. Councilmember Parker. Mayor Cogswell.
Aye.
All right. It passes unanimously.
No further action.
No further. All right, now we are on to bills up for first reading. We have N1 will be withdrawn as the annexation was withdrawn. It was all withdrawn, right? That's it on that. Go on to executive, right?
Yes, sir.
Nothing else on first reading. Okay, there is one item for executive session on the agenda. Need a motion to go in executive session. Motion made, properly seconded. We will go into my office. This, I think, should be agreed. We're all there. We're enough here. We've got a quorum. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session? Motion made, properly seconded. All those in favor coming out of executive session, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, ayes have it. We are now out of executive session where we got advice from council and no action was taken. And that concludes the agenda items for this meeting, our next regular meeting of City Council. Oh, wait, I got to sign, right? Yep. Sorry. All righty, next meeting, regular meeting will be on September the 9th. No further business.